We're gonna go ahead and start this evening's session of the regular council meeting, November 20th, 2012. We're gonna begin the meeting, looks like, at 6:38. I'm gonna begin with the invocation led by Councilman Keith Williams, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. You'll stand with me.
Lord, I just thank you for tonight. I thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord, and I just thank you for this time that you've allowed us together and do city business. Lord, just be with us tonight. Help us make the correct decisions that we need to make the city a better place, Lord, and just let us be safe as we leave tonight and for the next few days, over the holidays, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, would you take the roll call, please?
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Here.
Terry Sayer.
Here.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Kendall Stuckey.
Here.
Dean Bittner.
Here.
Paula Allred.
Here.
We have form.
Thank you. Give you a chance to overlook the Lowell City Council meetings from the regular meeting we held on October 16th, and then, of course, we had the special meeting dealing with Park Central Bond on the 17th of October, so look over those minutes. If you have any corrections, please bring those to the Clerk's attention, and also take a look at the financial statement for October. Any comments? Bring those forward, please. Be sure everybody has their microphone pulled to them correctly tonight. We've had a little bit of an issue with catching all the audio and remarks, so be sure your microphone is positioned right. I do good, Eric? Okay, thank you.
I have two questions, Kendall. Yes, sir. It's probably for Cindy on the monthly financial statements. I'm just, and I think she covered this last time, but I just wanna just maybe her refresh my memory on the county turnback. You know, we're ending October, this is the end of October, and the number's pretty far off. I think, as I recall, did you say that there's the county turnback, the ends, that the big amount of money comes at the end of the year? Is that how that typically works?
We got a big amount in November, almost $400,000.
Okay, well, that helps. That puts us where we need to be then. Okay. What about, do we, do you know anything about the operations and maintenance for the court? It seems like we're a little off there, about $6,000 and some change.
We are a little off. You're right.
Are we gonna have to do appropriation of funds for that money, or?
Well, we've asked everyone to pinch, don't spend, so we're hoping to just, if it doesn't turn out right, of course, we have to amend the budget to cover whatever shortfall there might be, but I haven't given up yet. I'm counting on it coming in just fine.
Thank you.
Kendall, a lot of these, some of these things, but some departments will roll over in 2013 if they didn't get them completed, and the mayor did send out a M.O. requesting that all the department heads, if there were things that could be postponed, and nearly all departments had at least one project, some several, that they could roll that over into next year, and that's what, and some, all those, all those things, by the way, have been moved to 2013 proposed budget that we'll be looking at tonight. Any other questions about the budget or correction to the minutes? Any kind of motion to approve the consent agenda items by voice, vote, by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed by saying nay. Enammas. This is our time of public forum, and it looks like we do not have anyone.
No, no, wait, I need to go.
Okay, do we have someone back there? Give the City Clerk a chance to retrieve the signing sheet. It's time that you may come and address the council for two minutes, and if anyone would like to speak, we do need your name registered on the signing sheet. We have Ronnie Breland. Ronnie, would you like to come and give your address and then your remarks, please?
My name's Ronnie Breland. I live at 315 Lynx Drive, apartment 201. First of all, I'd like for all us, all of us, to keep the family of that little six-year-old girl Bentonville's family in our prayers that they found this morning dead. And also, for the ones that aren't gonna be on council next year, I'd like to commend you on doing a good job that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. And thank you for calling our attention to family and their grief over the passing of this young lady. I'm sure we have many here that will do that. That would close the time of public forum at 6:45. Great. Well, I had the privilege of meeting Mrs. Fran Walker tonight with Nationwide Retirement, and she has a presentation dealing with the deferred compensation plan. So Fran, would you come and just tell us a little bit about yourself and the program that you have, so, thank you.
My name is Fran Walker, and I appreciate, first of all, the time to visit with you a few minutes tonight. I wanted to address Mayor Long and all elected officials and council members. This has been my passion for several years now, working with employees across the state of Arkansas on retirement planning, and when I finish tonight, I will leave some materials. There is a red brochure that's gonna be the simple version that discusses deferred comp retirement, and for those of you who like to read and be more educated, so to speak, there will be a packet. So there will be materials left here tonight. But deferred comp, or a lot of folks refer to it as a 457, is a voluntary retirement plan on a pre-tax basis. So this will always lower the employee's taxable income off their W-2. It is the municipality's version of 401K. The 457 number is just assigned by IRS for government employees. And a couple of points here I wanted to share with you. Couple of things, the payroll deduction, and it does have to be payroll deducted to come off the W-2 taxable income, but employees can enro as little as $10 a pay, and there is no cost to the city. The only thing involved with the city would be the time that it takes to send the contributions in to Nationwide. And Nationwide does all record-keeping, we mail quarterly statements, but the employee also can access their account online if they prefer to do so, but regardless, we're gonna mail four quarterly statements a year. Employees will have the choice of a fixed interest option this year, that has been at three and a half percent, or they can mix that with market options, of course. And a big part of that would involve me as far as education. I would be the person that would be servicing the city, and so I just want you, you know, to know that. Now, we've kinda talked about the basics of what a 457 is, as far as why you wanna go there or why you need it. Statistically, I think we all recognize we're not in ideal times as far as on a federal level. We have a lot of budget concerns, and with the baby boom generation that is beginning to retire, I read a statistic the other day that I find quite amazing, and I'm gonna read this to you for a moment. More than 10,000 people age 65 are turning age 65 every day for the next 18 years. 10,000 people a day turning age 65 for the next 18 years. And everybody in this room, myself included, I think the more that I can personally save on my own, the better off I'm gonna be in future years. So I just wanna leave that thought with you. The only thing I would like to ask your serious consideration at this time, and perhaps in December or whenever, but I would, you know, like for it to be sooner rather than later, is to give serious thought to approving a resolution to adopt Nationwide as a 457 provider, and then that way Nationwide on our end, we can get an entity number set up for the city, and then in January or whenever you wanna proceed, the education part, working with employees, would come about. Any questions that y'all have of me at this time? I will try to answer.
What type of administration fees do you have?
The administration fee on the plan is 50 basis points annually. This is on the IAFF II plan, which is the most recent plan, which, breaking that down in simple terminology, that means that basically the employee would incur a cost of a half a percent a year administrative cost.
It, most of you have heard me speak about this plan. This is what we have offered to us in Springdale prior to, I think, 2005, when, when they came in. The only option we had was ICMA, and ICMA's fees were fixed. They didn't ever go down. They actually went up over the years. When Nationwide came in and offered their plan, so many people switched from ICMA to Nationwide. The Nationwide, or I'm sorry, ICMA immediately sent out a letter announcing that they were lowering their fees and, and trying to retain that business. The important thing about this all is that it's solely dependent on the employee. It is pre-tax, so it could potentially put the employee at a lower tax bracket. Additionally, with the investment that you're making with this money, you are basically using the government's money for a period of time to invest, and so, you know, of course, you're gonna be taxed on the other end, but for a period of time, you're using the government's nickel. Beyond that, there's no cost to the city. It's not matching. The city doesn't contribute on their behalf, et cetera, et cetera. It's solely dependent on employee contribution. And Tom, I don't know if you use it in Springdale, but I have since its inception in 2005, and I can tell you that what we figure, lend to five and a half percent?
Five.
Five percent, and that includes the, the rocky road that we had in '07, '08, and '09. I'm still, in all these years, smoothed out. I've averaged five percent on my return, which is better than you're gonna get in a savings account, and I'm using the government's nickel to do it, so. Certainly, I would encourage the council, and the mayor has a copy of the resolution, but I'd encourage you to take this information, study it, and I'd like to, I'd like to leave the door open for Nationwide, and I'm not saying they need to be the only service, and Fran, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you guys come in and offer this program, others can come in with the council's approval.
Oh, sure, sure.
So it's not an exclusive right for them.
Right.
But it's, it's important. This is an employee benefit that we need to get going for our employees, and I'll take it a step further. Council members can participate, correct?
Yes, yes.
Even write, write it to the mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That would be my understanding. Any other questions? Anyone has?
No, just hang on to that, please.
Any other questions for Fran? Well, Fran, we truly appreciate you coming and sharing.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm gonna leave materials here, and I'll be accessible. I'll give you some business cards, so, that way I have my cellphone and email address, so be happy if there's questions or anything that comes up.
We appreciate you coming and sharing about the program.
Fran, one other question. Are you local to this area?
I actually, since I service the state, I'm as local as can be in central Arkansas. I live in Conway, so I go all corners. Dean can tell you, though, I'm very accessible. My cellphone rings quite often, but, you know, depending upon the city, upon your needs, if you want me up here twice a year, face-to-face with employees, that's fine. If you want me up here once a year, whatever your needs are, we try to accommodate, okay? Any other questions? Well, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving there, Fran. Well, I'd like to take this risk tonight and introduce someone for everyone to meet. Why don't you come forward there, Jerry? Jerry Hager, she's the new director of the J.B. Hunt Transport Senior Activities Center. Tell us a little bit what's going on down there, and just a little bit about yourself.
We'll start meeting in the morning at the senior center, and we will be offering lunch every day at, like, 11 to 11:30, and we will have all kinds of activities going on. We have plays and ballgames. We're going to some Razorback games and stuff, and we do our beanbag baseball and that type of stuff every day, but I, I really encourage people to stop by and check it out, even if you're not a senior, you can still come in, you can join us for lunch. It'd just be a $5 charge if you're under 60, but I want to make sure that we are, even though I don't actually live here in Lowell, I look forward to being involved in the community.
And we love her already. She's been wonderful so far.
Thanks.
We love her.
If you haven't seen it, it's a nice facility. You should go look.
Yes, please come and, we're, well, that'll be later. Later, we'll talk about the open house.
Repeat your question, please.
I said, I didn't have a question, really, but we'll talk later about the open house.
Okay, okay. Now, it's coming up before very long. Okay. That brings us to point on our agenda, old business. I have a report to the council with the appraisals that were obtained on both 211 McClure and 215 McClure, as directed by the city council. Shawn, would you come and kind of share with the council the results of that and kind of the new assessment that we have taken upon the view of acquiring that property, please?
I included those sheets for both of those properties. If you wanna take a look at the full appraisals, you're welcome to come by at any time. We'll have them here at City Hall.
Shawn, can you just refresh your memory on what the asking price of those properties were?
Push your microphone up, too, please.
The 211 is $126.
Okay.
There isn't actually an asking price on the 216. We're around a number of around 60 is what's been bounced around, and you notice on that particular appraisal, it's $50,000. So it's, wasn't too far off, and we knew the other one was well over what we thought it would be, but this was considerably more than what we thought it would be.
On the 215, do you think they'd sell for the appraised value?
Guess we may find out.
Okay.
Of course, since our last meeting, these appraisals did come back significantly lower than were expected, though we know, knew all along that they would come back lower than what the asking prices were. Shawn and myself, we felt that we do need to research some other possible space needs for the city, some other solutions, but at the same time, we do not want to close the door negotiating in the future possibly for this property, but this time, it just, it is not, it's not pressing for us to take any action on this, and I have no intention of doing that, and I felt I needed to tell the council that, so.
According to Tom, we have a resolution to enter into an agreement to purchase, but we don't have to rescind that, or we just typically won't take any action on it.
We don't need to take any action on it.
Good decision.
Any other questions regarding the appraisals of these two properties to the north side of the city?
Well, just out of curiosity, that 215, Shawn, I thought that was your family. I thought the number was quite a bit higher that they were originally asking, than the 60 anyway that you're saying now.
No.
Wasn't, wasn't 81?
No, sir.
Thank you, Shawn. Let's move on to new business at this point. Item number one, we have an ordinance authorizing the waiver of the requirement of competitive bidding for the purchase of police public safety software maintenance and other items for the city of Lowell, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Eric Seifert, did you wanna come out and address this, please? Did you ever have a graph there on your, in front of you tonight? I did not. I see one here, so must've been passed out. Thank you. First, Eric, a lot of this has to do with, your recommendation has a lot to do with providing adequate time to train personnel to use this system, correct?
Absolutely, yes. No, I, I need to get the ball rolling as soon as possible if this is the direction we're gonna go. I need data set samples sent to the other company. It's, this is a process.
So the $193 would be paid out over five years? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
Eric, why did you choose the, the four additional year support as opposed to five additional year support, average cost?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, these two systems are apples to apples.
I, I had them spec, spec this new system out with our current operating system.
They've been in business a while?
Long time. This is a current system that county uses, too, so we'll be able to get on a regional data sharing network, which is important.
And just going back to last month's council meeting, that was one of the first things I was concerned about, is technology changing, and if we, you know, hooked up with the county, that they would be somewhat obligated, you know, stay on that maybe, since other cities were pairing up with them, of course.
Chief Harvey's talked to Sheriff Electratic, and he has no intentions on changing the software anytime soon. Is that correct, chief?
Any questions for Eric regarding any, any part of this?
And Eric, can you talk, speak to your existing system and, and what you're lacking in the existing system as far as benefits? I understand this is compatible with county systems, and so we're gaining a lot in compatibility with the county.
With county and outlying municipalities that use CENTCOM as their dispatch.
Okay.
Which is everybody except for Rogers and Bentonville.
And, and really, a lot of superiority in this system versus what we have currently?
Absolutely. There's actually things that work the way that they're supposed to.
It's important to work the way they're supposed to.
Amazing, huh?
It looks like a lot of money, but it actually saves us money in the long run, so.
Yeah, over the long run, we're actually gonna save a little over $105,000 over nine
So I take it that the first payment's already in the, the budget?
Correct.
For this upcoming budget?
That's what we had talked about during the budget work session. Forty, it's, that was the jump you guys saw on my dues and subscriptions from.
That's the dues at $41,000?
Yeah, going from $26,000 a year on our current system to 42, but then after five years, we don't have any payments for four years.
Any other questions?
Only I would say is the, the, okay, sorry, yes.
You're satisfied with our tech support abilities and?
Our tech support will be going from what we currently have, which is Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, to 24/7.
Good enough.
Does this include the cost of training?
Yes. The only thing this does not include is data migration, which is up in the air. I won't know until they get a data set sample, but that's something I would cover out of my software budget anyways. And I don't anticipate that being more than a couple thousand dollars.
Any other question? Counselor Ray to the board?
Mayor, if I may, question for Tom. Will this expose us to any undue liability in the event that the previous software company wants to come back and complain?
Complain about?
Not being allowed to bid on the?
Oh, well, the city, the city is taking advantage of state law that allows us to waive bidding for good reasons. That requires an ordinance. The council has to find that there is in fact a reason. The courts typically, almost never, will second guess the council on the fact that they've, they've found a reason, so it's something that I recommend to be done rarely, not make a habit of it, but in those situations, and software is certainly one of them, where you've got to get implementation going, then bidding can become counterproductive.
Yeah, my, my only concern is we're moving away from an existing provider without giving them an opportunity to, that's my only fear.
Very well, very well may be, but that they will complain, and they will make some noise. I do not expect they would have any success in that regard.
Very well. That's all I need. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the?
Suspend the rules.
This board can do that. I was gonna recommend here a three, three-step process tonight to suspend the approval to enact so that we can meet these time-sensitive needs.
Yeah, suspend the rules placed on third and final, by title only.
Okay, so you wanna rephrase that, Dean?
I move that we suspend the rules placed on third and final reading by title only.
Okay, we have a motion by Jeanette to suspend the rule and place ordinance on third and final reading.
Second.
By, oh, well, we had a second.
Oh, we are.
By Dean. We had a second by Dean down here. Roll call, please.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Dean Bittner?
Yes.
Motion to approve the ordinance as presented is approved. I will read the ordinance by title only. Authorizing the waiver of the requirement of competitive bidding for the purchase of police public safety software maintenance and other items for the city of Lowell, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance with emergency clause as presented.
So moved.
Second by Paula Allred, second by Eric Shine. Was Eric, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Dean Bittner?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
And Eric Shine?
Yes.
This motion to approve the ordinance with the emergency clause as presented is approved.
Thank you, Eric.
Ordinance number 921.
I move the adoption of the emergency clause.
We have a motion to enact the emergency clause as presented by Jeanette Lassiter.
Second.
Kendall was pretty quick there, so we'll get it to Kendall.
Okay.
Thank you, Kendall. Call in favor, say aye. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like a sign. Okay. Item number two on our agenda tonight is a resolution. It is a resolution adopting the 2013 budget for the city of Lowell, Arkansas. Cindy's going to come forward and kind of explain some of our notes here. Hopefully you got all your pages either snapped in tonight or have them there before you that changes that were discussed in the last budget work session. Uh, she has put together a summary of, um, all those things that were discovered that need to be entered and, um, also a few more. So we'll just go down through here with any questions you've got and begin our session on approving the budget tonight.
Uh, does anyone have any questions about the items on the list?
I, I was just, I have a question on the administration, the salary increase. I don't see it how it's referenced in backend, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, for the new director over the existing, well, I guess, yeah, the existing director, doesn't seem to be fifteen. Am I looking at that wrong? Is that a typo?
But the increase is, um, at the budget work session, the amount I had in the budget at that time has been increased by fifteen thousand. It doesn't have anything to do with the existing finance director. It was all about the new position.
Okay, so the overall, not just his, that person's salary?
Correct.
And these sheets don't reflect these changes?
So.
I'm sorry, Jeanette.
These attached sheets don't reflect these changes?
Yes, they do.
See, I don't have my book. That's a, now it's sixty. Okay.
That'd be the to, total salary would be at sixty on that? Is that what?
If, yes, approved, I guess the start date is in January for that position?
No, actually be a, a week from, uh, yesterday.
It'll be Monday, yes. Monday, the twenty-sixth.
We need some time of transition.
Uh-huh. How do we account for, is there money in the twelve budget for that, I guess?
That's already been appropriated or will be.
It will be appropriated.
Oh, okay. So we address that in December?
We, we just got an acceptance, um, today.
Right.
So I haven't done anything with it yet.
That announcement you're going to make?
Yeah, announcement we're going to make later.
Okay, that's fine. We don't have to get in that now.
Any questions for Cindy or myself with any of this that we've been working on? We'd really like to pass this tonight. Um, we've worked hard on this budget and it's been a tighter budget to work out this year than it was last year, but no question about it.
Yes.
We started early. I appreciate all the department heads that have put so much into it. Uh, Mike, he did an exceptional job starting early.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I, I have a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
Because in the budget, I believe our funds allocated for purchase of these two pieces of real property, is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct. They're in, um, they're in the bundle amount, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because a decision hadn't been made yet on whether we're moving forward on that or not when I put this together.
And it's my understanding that you don't need our approval to move forward on it. Is that correct?
That is correct. But it does leave the door. Of course, I came back to the council with the information as you requested and I did not move forward. We'd like to leave it there without rescinding that. So if negotiations should pick back up to a later date, we're ready to go with a new amount, so.
I, I understand your position, Jeanette, certainly. I mean, if, if we didn't trust him and he wanted to move forward and make a silly purchase, he could, and I certainly appreciate your position, although I'm not too concerned about that happening. I think it is important we leave it there so that if these folks come to us and say, you know what, we do want to sell it and we will take the appraised value.
I just wanted it to be clear on the record.
Right.
Where we actually stand, so there's no surprises.
Sure.
If, if in fact.
Sure.
Well, I, I will promise this council before I purchased it, I would come back with my intentions, so.
Cindy, I do have a question, and this was just an observation, on the street supervisor salary for 2013. I, it appears to be lower because it's split between the two departments.
It's, yes, between two funds. Yes, he'll be paid half of his salary, we come from the street fund, the other half is in the general fund in Parks Department.
Okay, but if you add those together, it's fifty-four and last year's salary was sixty-three?
Uh, Jimmy was given an allowance, an increase in his wages, um, when he stopped driving a city vehicle home. He's going to begin driving a city vehicle home again, so the allowance that was made there was, um, reduced.
Okay, just, just wanted to make sure that that all was as intended, because when I was looking at that, I thought, oh, that doesn't add up to what, you know, it appeared to be lower on paper than last year, so I just wanted to make sure that was correct.
You're right, it is.
Okay.
And that's, that's what the difference is.
Okay.
If, uh, if I may, I have a question regarding the fire department. Chief Morris, this may, may be better for you. Mayor, do you want to do that now or do you?
No, it's fine.
Okay. Chief, on, uh, on your third line, uh, you speak to the position of, uh, division chief adjustment, um, eighty-three hundred and thirty-nine dollars, uh, in adjustment there. Is this the, is this the position that you spoke to us about the other night at the meeting?
Yes, and the reason that it's in there, the way it is done, is because it will depend on whether it's done internally or externally what the salary would be.
Okay.
And there's a considerable variation there, and that's if we went internal, what we did was we put in the maximum number that the change would be.
Okay. So if you promote it from within, that is the highest increase possible?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. Um, and, and I guess my next question is, this is an added position, correct?
It is, uh, it is a pre-existing position that I had chosen not to fill in the last three years and determined this year it was time to refill it.
Okay. Um, and the hiring of this individual, you will look both inside and outside?
Yes, sir.
And there'll be a testing process?
Uh, there will be an interview process. I'm not certain, we have not gotten to the, to the step-by-step analysis until we had approval that we knew we needed to do it.
So there's no salary put in here for an outside person coming?
There is. It's listed as a, uh, uh, down under firefighter. Uh, that's because we had originally, i- if, if we promoted internally, that position would then be filled with a new firefighter. So that's the salary listed, um, and then when you add the other lines that are changed pot, potentials, that's to, to actually bring their salary up to what it would be as a, as an external fire marshal.
I.
Externally hired fire marshal.
I got to tell you, chief, I really want to see this a tested position.
Yes, I know you do.
It's not my position to tell you how to run your department, but.
I understand that.
It needs to be a tested position.
I appreciate your, your, your input, sir.
Okay. Um, any other questions about the budget? Cindy, they must like what they see.
Yeah.
I want to thank you about that long session we had not too long ago. It was a marathon.
Mayor, if, if I may, on that note, one thing I'd really like to see us do as a body, um, and, and I realize that we were very, very generous with our employees last year and the year before, and we made some great headway, and certainly, um, this year's a little lean, but I would really like to see the council, um, monitor our revenues closely the first quarter, first five or six months even, um, and then maybe come back mid-year and do something to, uh, to help these employees, either in a one-time bonus or something. But let's see where our revenues take us, uh, during this recovery that we're experiencing, so, just like for you to keep an open mind about that, that's all I'd ask.
Recovery?
I'm sorry?
Just question your, your term recovery?
Well, we have At, we have Atwoods coming. Everything is upticking right now, certainly, um, but we have Atwoods coming, we have, certainly there's going to be a liquor store or two, um, so I think that, that projections are good for the city. And I, I'm just, I'm just asking that you keep an open mind and, uh, if it, if it turns to, if it comes to pass that, that we are doing better than anticipated, then, then we share the wealth.
Yeah, I'd recommend not looking at it until the second quarter, because the first quarter, there's so much outgoing on expenses with these new budgets.
Sure.
People ready to pull the hammer on some of these things we approve. That, that first quarter, uh, can sometimes look, look like we're going the opposite way.
Sure, you can get a false positive, and certainly, I'm just asking that the council keep an open mind and that we look into this mid-year and, uh, and try to do something for them.
Thank you for those comments, Dean.
So can I ask a question? I don't know who this is to be directed to on that sewer trust fund. What, what is that money that wasn't, money that was anticipated on the front? I don't, I'm confused about that exactly, I guess.
Okay, what's your question?
On the sewer trust fund, the increased, I guess it's saying revenue, so we're actually bringing more money in, sorry if I had to read it a little closer.
Uh, there's a fee, and I'm not sure how to explain it. Uh, we have an ordinance, I believe, is that correct, Don, that, uh, when new development comes in, that's going to be using this portion of the sewer line, uh, by ordinance, they pay a certain amount of money per foot or acre or yard or something like that. And this is what the fee is calculated for the Atwoods store that's coming in that we have not collected yet, but will be paid.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any question on any of the other funds? We ready to pass this budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll wait for a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to pass the budget as presented.
Second.
We have a motion made by Eric Shine, second by Dean Bittner. Any further discussion before we vote? City clerk, read the roll call, please.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Dean Bittner?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Present.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Present.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented was approved. Resolution is assigned number twelve dash one-seven.
Thank you. Item three on new business appropriation of funds memo. This is a memo to authorize a transfer of unallocated funds for the purpose of meeting unbudgeted expenditures for the animal control director promotion as specified herein. So this is to complete his, uh, wage increase for the remainder of this year, correct, Cindy?
Yes.
Okay. Any question of Cindy on this appropriation? I entertain a motion to approve the appropriation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Is that Jeanette? Okay, and second by Kendall? Roll call, please.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Dean Bittner?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Motion to approve the appropriation as presented is approved. Appropriation is assigned number, let me tell you a second here, fourteen dash two-zero-one-two.
Could you repeat the number one more time, please?
Fourteen dash two-zero-one-two.
Thank you. Uh, fourth item on agenda is also an appropriation of funds memo. It's a memo to authorize transfer of unallocated funds for the purpose of meeting unbudgeted expenditures in the Parks Department budget as specified herein, has to deal with the, um, earmarking a five thousand dollar donation properly that, uh, the donee has to be put within Parks Department specifically for the stage, I believe.
Just housekeeping.
Am I right, Cindy, on that?
Just housekeeping? Yes.
Any other question for Cindy or myself?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the appropriation of funds memo.
Okay, thank you. That motion comes from Keith Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Terry Sayer. Roll call, please.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Dean Bittner?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Motion to approve appropriation as presented is approved. Appropriation is assigned number fourteen, no, let me correct that, fifteen dash two-zero-one-two.
Repeat that one more time, please.
The number is fifteen dash two-zero-one-two.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our, oh, then new business for this evening. Now it's time for committee reports. Uh, Dean, would you like to make a, uh, report on the ordinance committee, please?
Yes, sir, I'll be very brief. The ordinance committee met, uh, on the twenty-third of October. Uh, we talked a little bit about signage in the city and the regulations on it. We also went over the, um, uh, city attorney position, um, in the city of Lowell and the avenues to remedy that, uh, once, uh, we've got our current matter concluded. We talked about the garage sale ordinance and come to find out the language that we were, that I was seeking is already there, um, and we do have the, the vehicle there by which to keep those darn signs picked up. Uh, we also talked a little bit about, uh, outdoor storage as an upcoming topic, um, for, uh, finished and unfinished product, and, uh, we talked about the citywide yard sale, uh, being defined, and then also the, uh, the group decided that we should probably start at the beginning of the ordinance book and work our way through it one at a time and, uh, try to tidy that up and, and get rid of old ones and improve existing. So, uh, that's going to be our task at our next meeting and coming meetings. Um, we were scheduled to meet November twelfth and, uh, actually had to be canceled because, um, I was unavailable as well as, uh, Mr. Smith was out of the country and so forth, so we have postponed it. We will reschedule shortly.
That brings us to our announcements.
Before we go to announcements, Dean, I just had a question I could about ordinance committees. Back when we were doing the, uh, do not knock or whatnot, we were going to have like placards that would be available to citizens, that come through or are we not doing that or? I know we can register with the city for a do not knock, but weren't we going to come up with some sort of a placard that a person could put at their entrance of their home or their, like Springdale's done it, I mean, I just, you know, city of the South, you know?
We don't have a do not knock.
But I thought we had a deal that we could, that you could register with the city, but we were talking about doing a, a sign if you wanted to put it at the front of your house or something.
I don't know that we ever actually agreed on any particular signage or shape, size or color, any of that business. Um, frankly, I'd hate to get into the business of providing no soliciting signs, that could be a tremendous expense.
Well, I mean, we, we'd pay for, I mean, the person would have to pay for it, obviously, it'd be, it'd be a, a dollar amount or something.
Yeah.
We'll buy one.
I don't think we ever actually got, got all the way down that path, Tom.
That's unfortunate.
There were lots of, uh, lots of boulders in the road.
Well, I just, I know that a lot of people have asked me about it and I just, I couldn't remember if we did it and I just didn't notice it the other day, you know, traveling through the city, you know, that, to the south, Springdale, they had some signs up and I'd actually asked somebody and they, I guess the city started selling them or providing them, I don't know what they're doing. them, I don't know what they're doing.
Yeah, Springdale has that policy.
That's something we can certainly address down the road. Do you want to do that? Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other question in reference to ordinance that, ordinances that the committee is working on, so? Okay, let's move on to announcements, then. Under announcements, we have won the Park Central settlement, obviously, we were all present at that special session, we know that we settled on an amount of $400,000. We did get the check, Tom Kickleck presented Cindy with that check, I believe, one day in my absence, and it is deposited.
We went to the Ferrari dealership together.
It, it did have the city's name on it, so that, that made me sweat a little, not sweat so badly, so, but that has been deposited. The thing that we just need to, to be aware of with, with knowing that now, is that obviously we're tasked with now getting that piece of property in a position to market, so immediately following holidays, maybe possibly prior to Christmas, we're going to be speaking with the bank that holds that piece of property, and having some discussions about what we need to do. We also have Chris Button, who most of you have met him, going to be reassessing a way to possibly salvage some of that system, and looking at possibly some inclusion of some detention ponds, and some things like that. The, the thing about it is, we do need to get that piece of property up to where it's marketable, so that we can get business community excited about moving in on, on that, that Park Central property. So it's going to take a, take a while, but at least the lawsuit is settled, praising God.
Have you had any contact with the bank yet?
No, we have not. Any other question or comment about Park Central while we're discussing that? You want to make a comment, Tom?
I have a, I have a comment. Can this Tom go first? I'll let, I'll let the attorney Tom go first.
No, no, no.
I was just curious, I mean, who, I know it's winter time now, but who's, the bank has been responsible for maintaining that property as far as mowing it and picking up, correct?
The owner. We're not the owner.
We are the owner?
We are not.
Oh, no, so the bank is taking care of it, okay.
They even have more incentive to do that now than they had before.
Sure.
So... Next item under announcements, did you mind make a comment on?
Just, I've already thanked all of y'all, and thanked the mayor, and explained to you what great service y'all got out of the mayor, as well as Mr. Button. I, I would also, again, sort of echo that i-if people want to begin to consider that a blank slate, don't let the, the streets and the sewer pipes under them get in the way of what you might want to do with that property. I would talk about it that, in that way, so that folks who are looking at it know that they're not bound by necessarily the existing plat, it could be replatted, and the, the existing infrastructure that is failing and has failed, it could be reclaimed in some way, so that it won't further deteriorate, and that property could be used in any way, whatever someone's imagination could dictate. So, I would encourage y'all, as you're out in the community marketing that property, to keep that in mind.
Steering Committee for the Kathleen Johnson Memorial Project, that's in the process of being put together. We've got several great ideas that are starting to emerge. I visited with Leonard, and I've been visiting with others, Sean Ingram is helping me on this project as well.
What is it?
What is it?
Yes.
What is it? Okay, this is a...
Who is Kathleen Johnson?
Kathleen Johnson is the wife of Leonard Johnson, who in 1962 chose a place where they would live over on Bellevue Road, and she passed away a year and a half ago, and Leonard came into City Hall after the National Day of Prayer, said, "I want to talk to that mayor." And I thought he was here for the meeting, but he wasn't here for the meeting. I had a later engagement to speak with him at nine o'clock, about some issues about some survey markers on his property. And so when I asked him that, I said, "Well, you must be Leonard, and, and you must want to really talk to me." And that didn't disturb me too much, but he'd had two tall gentlemen with him. Who was there? Jim was there, Sean, you out there? And it was Sean, Sean Ingram and Jim, I grabbed them as I'm walking down the hall, leaving here, because I said, "Oh, no, these are attorneys, no offense, Tom." And we go back to the conference room and sit down, and, and Leonard begins to tell in his sweet little voice how his wife in 1962 chose the place that they lived on, and I thought he, and he wanted to do something in her memory. I'm thinking, he's probably wanting to give something to the senior center, something like that, and he, at that point, says, "I just want the city to see that this property is used for nonprofit and public use purposes." And I think, oh, he's going to leave their lot, their place. And then, one of the, the big guys there kind of bowled up a little bit, and said, "Well, Larry, you better tell them a little bit more than that." And he said, "Oh, yeah, it's 100 acres." So, the city has been gifted with the use of a very special piece of property that I think will draw a lot of commerce and economic development into that area, and we are, I've been working with a lot of agencies to see which ones are really interested. We're trying to find those things that, that they're really, really legitimate needs, without being redundant.
Like a library.
Excuse me?
Like a library.
Well, one of the things that's come to our attention, that a lot of people in this area really support, is somewhat of a swim gymnasium, to where it's enclosed, and it would teach toddlers all the way up to college age, swimming and diving, and actually put them on an Olympian type of track, you know, to do that type of, type of things. That's gaining a lot of momentum.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we have, I don't know if I'm putting him on the spot, but Eric, pull up that, I don't know, I don't, I just know it's off Bellevue, do we, can we pull up a map of it?
Yeah.
Kind of Google map, and kind of?
Yeah.
Give us a general location?
Yeah, give you an idea of where it's at.
Does it go from Bellevue all the way to Gold Springs, or?
Okay, I'll tell you where, you know where Atwoods and the state police headquarters will, will be. It actually joins that property to the north side, and, and then it faces Bellevue to the west, so Eric will find a map there, see if we can pull it up. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I felt that everybody here...
Well, we, we've heard you talk about 100 acres, and it was being gifted, and it was going to be for nonprofit, but this is...
Never heard a name, you know?
Never knew the story, didn't really know the name.
Well, anyway, Kathleen, she died, you know, it, it's probably been closer to two years now. This actually happened like, just a day or two before Joe Landers passed away, and so in all that flurry of activity, it got pushed way back on the back burner, but I've been able to meet with a lot of people and see who's interested. There is a school interested in locating out there, of course, there's a, a lot of projects that would benefit our citizens in Lowell, as well as Rogers and that area. Here it is, thank you, Eric. Let me see.
The pond, not part of it? Is it a parcel above the pond?
Can you size it down just a little bit where we can see Highway 264? Okay, there you see Highway 264, the south side of your screen, that intersection of Bellevue. Okay, right there, that is the southwest corner. Go to the extreme north there, Eric, that's the northwest corner, and go all the way out to the east, that's the northeast corner, and that is the, or the, and the southeast corner, which, another thing that seems to be of a huge interest, is that eventually we might be able to have a farmer's market out there that would adjoin to the Arkansas Razorback Greenway, of course, which will go up Gold Springs Road, which puts it within a few hundred yards of that property, so our trail system could actually be interlaced through this project as well. Do you have one of those conceptual drawings, Eric, that we had Button, or Chris Button with Garber Engineering?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Okay.
About eight?
Yes.
Put it in layman's terms, for those of us that drive out that way every day, it is one tenth of one mile north of 264, just the southwest corner. That means you did respect that, and it was a little bit, it's on the east side of the road.
Okay.
We are working with Rogers right now, with plan to provide sewer and water into that area, and that is actually the area that, that we would like to see, our, the new substation that we've been discussing and having conversation about is on, I believe it's positioned on the southwest side of the property, right, Mike, best I recall?
To the south, is that's, that's a home currently there, is that where?
Yeah, there is a home there.
Is it being occupied by?
He, he's, he's living there right, right now, we, it, we, we don't know how long that, that will, will be, that he's able to live by himself, but, but anyway, this is, has so much potential for the city of Lowell, that it's really hard to wrap your mind about. This, this 100 acres could eventually be a point of destination, not only for the citizens of Lowell, but also the citizens of the region. If we have the right people to find the right things with the right funding mechanisms, we're going to need to cause it to happen, whether it be a five-year, 10-year, 15-year project, the way that we're moving west with improvements on 264, which are going to begin to take place this coming year, 2013. And also, I had a visit with Mayor Hines last week about their intentions with Bellevue, and they plan to bring Bellevue from the promenade right on south there, so that boulevard there intersecting with 264 in the future, 10 years from now, you won't recognize it. You literally won't recognize it. It's going to change, it's going to change quickly, and it's going to bring a lot of opportunity for our economic development in that area as well.
As much as William's property.
I apologize, I, I felt that, that there's a lot of confusion when this first happened because of the situation with Chief Landers, and I had started to make some strides and steps on that, and that got pulled back a month or two, and then, through the summer, I've had a lot of help with different people weighing in on the, the right, the right types of things, but it's bigger than Leonard, it's bigger than the mayor, it's bigger than this council, and so not only am I excited about putting a steering committee together, I'm also excited about some of you. I know Linda, you had mentioned you'd like to serve on a committee. There'll be several subcommittees started at some point, dealing with fundraising and foundations, and all types of different things. But first, we've got to identify the true needs of the area, without any redundant projects that would overlap with things that Springdale Rogers is, are doing. I think that's the key for it to be a successful project, so we may even, at some point, be needing to look at a possible bond issue, you know, to embrace this, and maybe some other things that the city's needing to accomplish, so I intend, in my State of the City address, to bring a lot of information pertaining to this to you, so I'll have you a better report.
Where's the Rogers City Limit sign, is, or a line, is that right?
That is moved to the...
How far away is it?
Uh, I think it's another plat to the north, another 40-acre parcel. Yeah, it's...
Closer to Garrett Road, so it's pretty far up there.
It's prob, you know where Garrett Road crosses? It's, it's back probably, what, Mike, 300 yards?
Yeah.
400 yards?
From the north edge of that project to the center, it's exactly halfway.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
There's a little subdivision there on the left-hand side, on the northwest, that's pretty much.
I just couldn't remember where the line was.
Creekwood.
Lake, Lake Wood or Creekwood, yeah.
There's like...
Yeah. Our deputy attorney is in the process of working with attorney that oversees Mr. Johnson's trust, and I think we're looking forward to, what, probably something in about January? Can you kind of give us an idea of?
I'd like to say that, you know, once we're in touch, it can move quickly, but they are, those are, it's a tax lawyer's law firm, and they are busy, very busy, as they get folks who have a lot of money, need to make their donations, and adjust their tax situation for the end of the year, and that's pretty much what he explained to me today. So it may be January, Mayor. I'd love to get it done in December, but it might be January.
We are planning at some point this spring to not have a ground breaking, but somewhat of a public announcement, once we kind of identify everyone that's seriously considering a project out there, to get them all together, and have Leonard there on the side as well. And we asked him the other day, "You got a suit?" And he said, "Yeah, I got a suit." "Do you think we could get you in it?" And he said, "Yeah, I'll be ready." So, I don't have many, I don't know if any of you know Leonard, but he's a very charming, thoughtful man, so every eye was wet that day, around that table, for sure. Let's move on to number three. We have the J.B. Hunt Senior Activities Center, open house and ribbon cutting, scheduled for December 19th at 2:00 p.m. Cecile Bledsoe and other state representatives will possibly be there as well. They're putting on, putting together quite a program, so I want to encourage everyone to come out at that time. We also have good news report today, that we have an occupancy permit there, and that was issued yesterday by Building Services, thank you, Don. I think we came up with a figure, how many, 168, 2169? And they will actually be meeting there for their meetings tomorrow. Be the first day that they, they meet inside that new facility. So we're looking forward to the open house, and hopefully, council will show up for that and support of that, and anyone else? It'll be 2:00 p.m., okay? Then we have the Christmas open house. Liz, would you like to tell everyone about that?
Okay. The open house is going to be on December 21st. It'll be in stages from 1:00 to 2:00. We'll have the children from Lowell Elementary School that will come over, 75 kids will be singing in a choir. Santa Claus will be present, and he will pass out goodies to the kids. They will tour the museum while they're there, after the singing is over. And then, from 4:00 to 6:00, we'll have an open house at the Lowell Museum, also here at City Hall, and then also at Heritage Park, and all this will be going on simultaneously. We have asked a band, a local band, to play Christmas music and other music from 5:00 to 6:00, and they will be located in the gazebo. And we're going to have it lighted and everything, and have things around decorating. So, that's the basic that we've put together. We think we have something for the children, something for the young adults, and something for the older adults that want to come and hear that good music. Then, we're also asking for volunteers to help us put this together, and if there's other ideas we can come up with, we can add to this and stay within budget. We, we need ideas. We also have items that we need. We're asking for people to, to donate lighted LED strings of lights and Christmas ornaments, and, and there's suggestion for live Christmas trees to be planted, maybe one at Heritage Park and one at the museum, that would be decorated eventually, and stay there year after year, and be added to the landscaping. There's candy and cookies and things that we need to consider for the... There's candy and cookies and things that we need to consider for the food items for everybody to eat when they come to see all the good stuff that's going on. So I have, I have two sheets up here at the front. I would like to invite everybody that would volunteer to help during this affair, also to volunteer to donate things, cash. If you don't want to donate anything in particular, but you want to donate cash to pay for this, we would accept that. So if you would sign this sheet and let me know you're available, we'll call for a meeting next week.
And Elizabeth, these times be posted on our internet for the citizens to be able to see it?
What time was it?
The open house will be from four to six P M.
Okay. Getting ready for those fest, festive weeks coming up prior to Christmas. We have a runoff election for the Alderman race coming up on the twenty-seventh. So we want to remember.
Early voting is going on already.
Early voting is taking place right now. Municipal League Winter Conference is January sixteenth through eighteenth at Little Rock. And if you want to participate, attend that, we have applications and registration forms in City Hall. So anyone that would want to attend that, please be thinking about that now because you'll need to reserve a room early. Last thing I have on my list is I, I just want to mention our employee Christmas party. It was a huge success last year. I don't know how many we had. It's somewhere neighborhood of a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen. Of course, this does not come from any city funds whatsoever, but we do need volunteers. So if you would like to volunteer for helping that evening with decorating or greeting or just setting tables.
What day is it?
It's going to be either the fourteenth or the fifteenth. We're not conclusive on the, the date as of yet. We're leaning towards the fifteenth, but we may possibly have to move it up to the fourteenth. We're kind of going back between two different locations, trying to work those aspects of it out. But this, last year's where we recognized our employee of the year. We'll be doing so again. We'll have a Santa there and I think we already have a volunteer for Santa there. I wonder who that would be? Dean, you're smiling.
I have no idea.
I have no idea. But, but anyway, the employees look forward to that and I know that we look forward to hosting that for them. I'm looking forward to the music that we have there. So if you can help with that, planning commissioners, you're more than welcome to help with that. This is our opportunity as a, a city in elected positions to really say we appreciate what the employees do. So we do not ask them to turn a finger for this event. So we do all the finger turning. So we, we need you if you can help, okay? Any other announcement? Excuse me? Oh, I am about to forget the biggest announcement of all. Thank you, Cindy. This has to do with the acceptance of the position offered to Finance Director for the city of Lowell. And he has sent me a signed letter of acceptance, and that is the former Finance Director for the city of Rogers, Jerry Hudlow. So we will be making a press release tomorrow on this issue. And if any of you know Jerry, he's a wonderful person. He has tons of experience. Out of all of those that we interviewed, many were qualified, but no one actually shined to the point that someone that we needed at this, this, this time in our city. So I think Jerry is going to be a great fit for the city. We know he has the knowledge, we know he has the education, but he certainly has the experience. And that was what we were looking for. And he, I'm looking forward to when he does finally join us, getting with each director of each department together with him and getting him acquainted with, acclimated to our city. And of course, we know that we're going to be missing Cindy here before long.
Cindy? Cindy who?
Yeah, it's kind of a bittersweet situation, isn't it, Cindy? So we, we, we'll talk about you later. Oh, me. Well, tremendous job. I tell you what, it's, it's been a hard thing getting to. Cindy and I have enjoyed two years here. It's very special and it's helped me a lot as a new mayor. I'm going to miss her tremendously, but I know that she feels comfortable and I feel comfortable with this election. So we're looking forward to installing Jerry Hudlow as our Finance Director. So. Any other announcement?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, so.
I'm over adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign?
Who's the second? We have the like motion, who seconded it?
You second that?
Who seconded the motion?
Terry Sayer.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay. So we'll conclude this council meeting adjourned at seven.